Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. It's real pleasure for me to introduce none other than Dr. Montek Singh Aluwalia. He's a great personality, great economist, and builder of the nation called India. I had been introduced to him when I was the registrar of Vishw Bharati. He visited once in 2005 along with Madame Aluwalia. I remember you, sir. Montek Singh Aluwalia served as deputy chairman of the Planning Commission of India from July 2004 till May 2014. This was an appointment at cabinet minister level, and Mr. Aluwalia was a special inviting to the cabinet and several cabinet committees. He has held several positions in the government earlier and has been a key figure in India's economic reforms from the mid-1980 onwards. He was awarded the prestigious Padmo Bhushan, India's second highest civilian honour by, yeah, thank you, by President of India in 2011 for his outstanding contribution to the economic policy and public service. Mr. Aluwalia received a BA honours degree from St. Stephen's College, Delhi University. He went to Oxford as a Rhodes Scholar, had received an MA and an M Phil in economics from Oxford University. He has received several honorary doctorates, including the Doctor of Civil Law Honour Discaza from Oxford University. He joined the World Bank in 1968 as a young professional and then held various positions, including Chief of the Income Distribution Division. He left the World Bank in 1979 to join the government of India as Economic Advisor in the Ministry of Finance, after which he held a series of positions, including Special Secretary to the Prime Minister Rajiv Gandhi, Commerce Secretary, Secretary in the Department of Economic Affairs, Finance Secretary in the Ministry of Finance, Member of the Planning Commission, and Member of the Economic Advisory Council to the Prime Minister. In 2001, Mr. Aluwalia was appointed the first director of the newly created Independent Evaluation Office of the International Monetary Fund. He resigned from that position in June 2004 to take up the position of Deputy Chairman of the Planning Commission, Government of India, which he held up to 26th May 2014 when there was a change in government. Mr. Aluwalia has written on various aspects of development economics, including Indian economic policy, and his articles have been published in a number of professional international journals and also in books. He co-authored Redistribution with Growth: An Approach to Policy, published in 1975. He also wrote Reforming the Global Financial Architecture, which was published in 2004 as Economic Paper Number 41 by the Commonwealth Secretary at London. Mr. Aluwalia is an honorary fellow of the Magdalene College, Oxford. He is also a member of the Governing Council of the Global Green Growth Institute, a new international organization based in South Korea. He is a member of the ALPAG-Laxemburg Group established by the International Institute of Applied System Analysis, IIA SA, and the ALPAG Economic Forum. Montek Singh Aluwalia is married to Dr. Isher J. Aluwalia, an economist in her own right, and they have two sons, Favan and Amman. May I request Dr. Aluwalia to kindly come to the dial and deliver a speech?
A very hearty welcome to you, sir. We request you to kindly take your seat. Thank you, sir. We request you to kindly take your seat, sir. Thank you. And I will take this privilege to introduce the moderator for this session, Mr. D. N. Mukherjee, editor of Fortune India. May I request you to kindly come onto the desk and take your seat, sir? Mr. D. N. Mukherjee is the founding editor of Fortune India, brought out jauntly by the ABP Group and Time Inc. Since its launch in October 2010, Fortune India has emerged as India's most widely-read international business magazine with a total readership of over four lakh. A keen observer and commentator of India's rapidly altering business environment, Mr. Mukherjee has been a business journalist for over twenty years, holding several senior positions within the ABP Group. Besides being the editor of Fortune India since early this year, Mr. Mukherjee has been given the responsibility of building ABP's digital business. Uniquely, the digital business is being built out as startup within the heart of a legacy media conglomerate. A very warm welcome to you, sir, and I will hand over the entire session to you now. Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome, Mr. Aluwalia, to Infocom. The gentleman sitting to my left really doesn't need any further introduction. And I think the one thing to remember is that he's been associated with the government for nearly thirty-six years now, right? Seventy-nine you came back, right? Thirty, yeah. And, but more importantly, he was, he's seen the change in India from very close and has been an architect of that since 1991, having held some very senior positions. He's battled the crisis of 1991 famously, right? And then, along with a handful of people who've now become legendary, brought India onto the new path of what is called liberalization or de-licensing. And the way we're going to run this session is, he's going to speak for about fifteen minutes, and then I'll ask him a few questions, but I know I don't, or I shouldn't come between what you want to ask of him, and we'll try and open it to the audience as much as possible. We stand at a very interesting juncture as far as the Indian economy is concerned. The present government came on almost on a slogan and as well the hope of pulling the economy by its socks, Achhedin and so on and so forth. But the experience in the last year and a few months seems to have been a little mixed. Some would say that the high hopes that a lot of people had about the Indian economy really outpacing its recent past have been belied, though the latest results of the past quarter seem to be encouraging. We've grown at seven and 7.4%. And so this context makes for a very interesting discussion with a man who's been at the center of it all. And may I now request you to say a few words? Okay. Would you like to speak here?
Maybe for the introductory fact. Well, shall I also call you Bonnie, since you told me that everyone does? Well, thank you, thank you for inviting me, and thanks to the Adamas University for sponsoring this session and for all the nice words that you've said, which I don't actually deserve, but I'm very happy to accept. You know, I've, I know the subject is, it says many things. Make in India: Meeting Domestic Demand Versus Export Opportunities. Now, I interpret the central purpose of that title must be, how do we make Indian manufacturing grow and become competitive? And you can cut into that in different ways. But I just want to give you a little bit, trace the history of the "make in India" phrase, because you know, I heard it first when Prime Minister Modi used it in his first Independence Day address from the Red Fort. And it's interesting, because at that time, it was used in the context of inviting foreign business to come to India. What he said is, you know, "We want foreign business to come in, and we want them to make in India." So I read that, like saying to foreign business, "Don't just sell in India, come and make in India." And I think that has a certain logic to it, bringing in better technology, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Then, a little while later, Governor Raghu Ramrajan made a comment that, you know, when we say "make in India," it shouldn't just be that you're making it for exports. You've got to have the domestic market also in mind. Many people interpret that as a comment about the state of the export market. You know, global exports are not going to be very great, although I personally think that we are such small players that, you know, if we had a strategy to cut into the market of existing major exporters like China, we could actually do quite well. And as a matter of fact, China is going to vacate many areas which it has dominated in the last twenty years. And therefore, the choice that we have is, is that going to go to Bangladesh and Vietnam, or are we going to do something about it? So I don't share this pessimism, although I agree with Raghu that, you know, we can't be assuming that global trade will be booming. But see, the important thing is that "make for the domestic market" shouldn't mean that we'll erect nice protective walls, so no matter what happens in the world, we will just make for ourselves. That's what we did from 1950 to 1971, and it was pretty disastrous. So I think this is an important issue, that whenever we look at a policy, what is our view on the integration of the economy with the global economy? And are we talking about manufacturing competing with imports and also trying to export? You know, some degree of protection is always there, but the general principle is that that should be modest. And one should not react to a domestic problem by raising protective barriers. Yet, you know, the danger of that is actually quite high. I mean, flying in today, I read in The Telegraph, when you, when you come in for an ABP meeting, it's a good idea to read The Telegraph, right? So, big news item which says that the steel secretary says, "Sale is doing so badly that I'm thinking of recommending more protective duties." Now, that's the exact opposite of global integration. And I think we have to think about whether this makes sense, because of course, if you raise the duties on steel, it will help the steelmakers. But what is it going to do to the steel users? Actually, if we had a secretary who was responsible for all the industries that use steel, I think the two of them should be interviewed by Bonnie together, so that we can work out what is in India's interest. And, you know, to my mind, there's been this debate in the same, either in the same newspaper or in another newspaper. I think Rajwarri doesn't write for you, right? He writes for some other people. Okay. Rajwarri makes the point that the real problem is that the exchange rate is overappreciated. And lots of people have commented on the fact that if you look at the RBI's monthly bulletin, you know, they track what is happening to the rupee exchange rate in real effective terms. That means after adjusting for relative price inflation, some thirty-country index and so on. Based on that, over the last two years, rupees actually appreciated about 10%. So clearly, from a competitiveness point of view, one of the issues that one has to face is that if industry is not feeling adequately supported, should we stick on duties or should we do something with the exchange rate? And that's a very sensitive issue, and I'm really enjoying saying this, because when I was in government, I never used to talk about the exchange rate, because it's a sensitive issue. Since I'm a private citizen, I mean, it's absolutely a central question that when you find that domestic industry is finding the going difficult, it's not just one industry that's finding it difficult. Every industry is finding it difficult, but some industries are more heft and more clout. But whenever a solution is found for a particular industry, it becomes tailored to that industry. Whereas if you look at it more generally, you would ask yourself the question, what do we need to do to make Indian industry actually more competitive? Now, in the last couple of years, during the slowdown, I think some improvement is seen now, manufacturing did very badly, but for about eight or nine years after 2003, manufacturing grew at something like 9% or so. Our hope at that time was that it should be double-digit, and the slowest, the lowest double-digit number is 10%. So we didn't, we weren't able to make it grow at 10%, but it did grow at 8%. And certainly in the previous government, in the Twelfth Plan, there was a lot of focus that how do we make sure that Indian manufacturing grows more rapidly? I'm sure that the present government is looking at the same issues. And I think the "make in India," if you think of it as an umbrella, an umbrella slogan or an umbrella program, to do things that would get translated into a rapid growth in manufacturing, that's the real question. What is it that we need to do? Because I think we're all agreed that the growth of manufacturing has not been good enough. Now, in my view, there are several things that have to be done. And you know, one of the problems when you get industry lobbying is that there's just a focus on one particular thing. Actually, there are several. It's quite possible that all of them can't be done, at least can't be done immediately. But it's important to recognize that if you have a two-, three-year program to set things right, you must take care of each of these things. We had outlined that in the Twelfth Five-Year Plan document. I believe the successor to the Planning Commission, the Niti Ayog, is now about to do a midterm appraisal. So we'll get a sense from that appraisal, how does the government intend to address these same challenges? But I would list maybe four or five things which are very important. One is we should be very clear that we are working in a globally integrated world, and this actually puts two very important pressures on us. One is actually something which is a pressure on the government, that you mustn't have, you know, inverted tariff structures. You can't have a product which is imported at a certain rate of duty, and the inputs that go into that product attract much higher rates of duty. Now, obviously, if there's one little input that attracts a higher rate of duty, it doesn't make that much difference. But if you, if most of them attract a higher rate of duty, that industry is not going to be very competitive. So I think that's something that one needs, that's relatively easy to do, and it's something that between industry, that is the actual chambers, the Ministry of Industry, the Ministry of Finance, you know, you need some coming together. And it is true that we have a lot of tariff inversions. It's also probably true that all of them can't be got rid of, but it's certainly true that a lot of them can be got rid of. So really, progress means fixing this problem big time. And I mean, one of the ways of getting rid of tariff inversion is lower the upper-end rates. Because the more you lower the upper-end rates, the closer, the smaller the variation, the less the problem. And you know, I have always maintained that when you do that, you offset that by an exchange rate change. Because from the point of view of the importer, whether he gets the benefit in terms of a weaker exchange rate or he gets it in terms of a tariff, it's exactly the same thing. And I mean, that is something that involves the Finance Ministry and to some extent also the Reserve Bank. So basically, four or five different wings of government have to take a consolidated view on what we can do on tariffs and how much can we do on the exchange rate. That's one issue. Then you go into the input side. Well, before the input side, it's a question now increasingly of standards. You know, more and more, global trade is a, a trade which involves countries getting into the value chain at some point or the other. I mean, there are very few countries of which it can be said that they're producing something, starting within the country, then an intermediate, then something and produce an output. I mean, it's a, it's a global value chain, so people are producing things that fit into something else. Now, in that environment, harmonization of standards becomes really very critical. And I think this is a big issue, because policy-wise in India, we have traditionally thought of trade negotiations as negotiations on the border, on what you would call interference by countries at the border by putting tariffs. The new trade negotiations that are going on, like the Trans-Pacific Agreement or the Trade and Investment Partnership between Europe and the United States, they're now going behind the border to try to align all kinds of standards. That's a very simple thing, that you know, if your automotive standards are not aligned with world standards, in all probability, your production structure is going to be geared to whatever the standards you have. And therefore, units within the country that are geared to those standards are not going to be able to fit into global value chains. Now, this creates a bit of a conflict. The usual trade negotiators say that this is an intervention in sovereignty. It's none of your business what our standards are. That's absolutely true, by the way. But the problem is that if you don't have the right standards, you're not going to be able to sell the goods abroad. Because producers are going to demand standards and consumers are going to demand standards. I saw in the newspapers today, very interesting, by the way, that Danone, the French yogurt manufacturer, is going to market mishchidori in Europe, in France. Now, I thought that's rather good. I mean, you know, he's a very good example, that a company with a global brand and a global reach turns up, they think there'll be a demand for mishchidori, they think there's something similar between that and creme brulee, which the French love, so they're going to manufacture it. But they're going to manufacture it to European standards. So the issue really is, if an Indian company, and after all, it's a bit odd that, you know, mishchidori should be sold by multinational, you'd think that an Indian company should also be able to do it. And they will. But they have to be very clear, they have to meet the standards that prevail over there. If we say, "No, no, no," but everybody who really knows mishchidori doesn't use these standards, it's not going to help in global trade. So I think this is another aspect of globalization. How much of our industry is actually capable of meeting the sort of standards that are necessary to fit into global value chains? And actually, in the trade negotiations, this is an issue of dispute. I don't know what position Indian industry takes, but in the whole Trans-Pacific Partnership discussion, the debate really is, why are you fellows getting into things which are different from the traditional trade negotiation concerns, which are tariffs? But the short answer is, that's how the world's moving. The Chinese, by the way, also don't like that. The difference is, the Chinese are quite clear in their own mind that they're adjusting their own standards, so that as and when they're ready, they'll just kind of move straight in and be ready to meet those standards. And that's what we should be doing. Whether we are in this thing or not is not the important point. We need to make sure that our industry is capable. And you know, it can't be done just for the export component. I mean, in the sense that, you know, very few companies are 100% export. I would say a company is very global if 30%, 40% of its output is exported. But you know, if alignment of standards becomes relevant, then they can't be running two different production streams, you know, one global standard and one domestic standard. If they do that, and the same product is being produced at lower standards domestically, it just won't be viable. So it's a very, very big issue, to which I think not much attention has been devoted so far. And we need to think about that. Then, of course, there are traditional input-type issues which have been the bane of Indian manufacturing. I mean, infrastructure. And obviously, infrastructure actually means power and logistics, and two big things, okay? Now, one of, I mean, here again, you have a very interesting issue, that why is the quality of power and the cost of power in India so high? It's not something that the central government is actually responsible for. It's entirely the business of the state government. And in most of the states, they're maintaining a very large power-subsidized consumer category, low-income households, agriculture, et cetera, and cross-subsidizing by overcharging industry. The consequence of that is obviously that the industry becomes uncompetitive. So I think somewhere, the problem is, when manufacturing is discussed, the people who are responsible for making this decision are not around the table. And yet, unless those decisions are corrected, the basic problem will actually remain. There's some hope that, you know, this, some years ago, the government had decided that along the dedicated freight corridors, there will be a series of industrial location centers on which a lot of investment can take place, which would deliver high-quality infrastructure. And I think work on that has started. We have to see. One of those corridors is obviously Mumbai, Delhi. The other is Kolkata, Delhi. So I don't know whether, what is happening on the eastern corridor, these things always take a little bit longer. But that's a very important start. But you know, India is much more than just these corridors. So, I mean, while, while success in those corridors might demonstrate the importance of fixing infrastructure, the real lesson is that across the country, we ought to be changing the nature of infrastructure provision so that all manufacturers can be better off. Two more things, and then I'll stop, because we make it interactive. Clearly, finance is very crucial. And I think that a lot of the competitiveness of India is not so much going to come from the big, large enterprises, but it's going to come from middle. Now, you know, we, we always talk about small. And in my view, small scale is very important to start the process. But the real sign of a successful entrepreneurial environment is a lot of people get in as small units, and the really good ones amongst them quickly become middle-scale units. And if you look at the Indian size distribution of firms, that is the big thing that's missing. We have a reasonable number of large companies and humongously large number of very small companies, very few serious middle-scale companies. You know, when I say middle, I mean employing between 500 and 1,000 people. That segment is very, very small. And I think that's partly due to the fact that all these other constraints actually prevent our smaller companies from growing bigger and occupying that middle ground. We have, in the world of finance, I think one of the important things that has happened in the last five or six years is the beginning of venture capital funding. You know, the idea that small companies need equity, they need venture capital, that cannot be provided by banks. And that's been a missing thing, but over many years, I think the basic, the basic policy framework for venture capital to become effective has been put in place. And now, I mean, I see a lot of venture capital activity. It's still maybe one-tenth of what it should be, but it's much more than it used to be. So I think if we can get, get a push in that area, and there are still some problems, you know, exit problems, et cetera, that need to be handled. So I think, and of course, labor, that's, I'll just mention the word, everybody knows what the issue is. It's been my view that, you know, we do need to have more flexibility in labor. We don't have it, and I think the previous government had taken the view that this is something that should be negotiated with the unions. And I've discussed with many trade union leaders, saying that, "Look, this is, what you're doing is not in the interest of organized labor." I mean, my view is that if they were to give more flexibility, the size of the organized labor force would be much larger. Of course, there'd be more labor flexibility at the margin, but in exchange, you'd have a much larger size of organized labor force, which we don't at the moment. And I mean, that's, that makes India a bit unique compared to many, many other countries. So these are the areas where we need action. The problem really is that, you know, if you think that "make in India" is the job of the industry ministry, none of these solutions are in the hands of the industry ministry. The solutions are all in the hands of other ministries. So it has to be... So it has to be, you have, we have to coordinate, the government has to coordinate so that all these different bodies take a concerted view. And secondly, the central government has only about half, uh, the responsibility. The other half is in state governments. So unless the same thinking is actually shared by state governments, there's nothing much that can be done. So I think we need, in my view, there is not enough. Industry groups have not been very active. I think they've not been very active even at the national level, but they've been extremely inactive at the state government level. You know, given the importance of states, and that's a good thing. Uh, I would have thought that industry groups should be lobbying much more strongly with chief ministers. Uh, but I think they tend to prefer only to lobby with the central government, and probably even that is doing less of in the last few years than they used to way back in the nineteen ninety. And I can tell you that the reforms in ninety-one would not have happened if there wasn't this constant sort of interaction between representatives of industry and the government of India. So I was at that time, uh, you know, not, I mean, not exactly a junior-level officer, somewhere in between, I guess. But even before that, in the eighties, uh, we were all very aware that industry was coming forward and saying, look, this is what we want, all of us. These are the problems, can't you fellows fix it? Didn't get fixed immediately, but it did get fixed over time. So I think we need a lot more activism, uh, on the part of industry to have its voice heard, uh, once again. So with those words, thank you for inviting me, and I'm very happy to answer questions.
Thank you so much. Um, for those of you who don't know this, uh, Mr. Aluwalia, he has always been a great champion of liberalization and free trade to the extent that he has often been criticized for being too much of a champion of those two aspects, uh, by various worthies in the U P A government, right? And he's often locked horns with them, right? And, uh, so it's wonderful to have him now as a private citizen and who can observe and comment on, uh, the Indian economy as it's trundling along. Uh, so a couple of questions from me, and then we'll open it to the audience. You've been talking about, you've been talking about China for a while. I've been reading some of your statements that you've made about, and you mentioned it here as well, that, you know, China is in some senses vacating its position as the, as the factory of the world for a whole bunch of reasons. And the, the wage arbitrage opportunity that existed in the past is gradually dwindling. Do you see India having a specific China plan to occupy some of those spaces?
Yeah, let me, let me clarify. Uh, I didn't say that, I didn't think China was going to vacate. It's going to upgrade itself. So it's going to remain very active, but it's going to move out from low-value activity
And move to be higher.
Exactly, yeah. That means there is a vacation. Great advantage, I mean, whether it's shoes or textiles or whatever. These are not products that are being produced in the West. They're going to import them. There's no resistance to importing. There's nobody, I mean, except for the kind of shoes that maybe cost a thousand dollars a pair, uh, which maybe some, uh, Swiss, uh, leather manufacturers lovingly making. Nobody in the United States, nobody in Europe wants to make these kinds of shoes. They're going to be made elsewhere. So if we don't, and, and there's a good reason, by the way, why this is happening. You know, China is restructuring its own growth model.
That's right.
Okay? Its growth model earlier was based on the assumption there's a huge amount of export possibilities. The developed world is also expanding. We're going to sell to them, and we're going to sell it basically competing at the price end, very low prices. And they were able to do that basically because they kept their wages very low. You know, in Chi- China is at least three times our per capita income. And the Chinese consumption, rate of consumption was about fifty percent, and their savings rate was fifty percent. Whereas our consumption rate was seventy percent and our savings rate was thirty percent.
That's right.
And why was our consumption rate higher? Because I think our wages supported that consumption level. Chinese were able to hold back wages. Now, they realize that they can't do that. And they are actually going to, they, they say we're going to shift to domestic demand. Now, if you're going to shift to domestic demand, then you can't have consumption of fifty percent. It's got to go up. So they're going to, their own consumption patterns are going to change. And they're going to change because wages are going to rise. And if wages rise, then Chinese goods are going to become more expensive. That's actually a success of the Chinese model. In fact, they should go and tell the people that, look, uh, thanks to our very successful performance, you know, your wage rate is going up by forty percent. They'd be happy, we'd be happy, everybody would be happy. Now, you asked a question, do we have a China plan? When I was in government, and not just me, many other people also said that we ought to. I, I don't know what's happening right now, but I think the case for having such a plan is very much there. But you know, this plan is no different from all the things that are going under the rubric of making manufacturing competitive or make in India or whatever. And this is, this is where I disagree with, uh, Raghu. Uh, because he seemed to poo-poo the idea of export. I don't think he meant that, by the way. You know, sometimes the thing is if you're governor of the reserve bank, uh, you say something casually and then it keeps getting repeated.
That's right.
I'm sure he doesn't disagree with him, me, and I don't disagree with him. Uh, but we, we should quite clearly have a plan, uh, to occupy some of the areas that China is going to vacate. I mean, China is thinking of being the, the world's dominant supplier, let's say, of renewable energy. And the world's dominant supplier of high-speed rail. They don't want to be the world's dominant supplier of shoes and T-shirts and things like that. So there's no harm in us starting with shoes and T-shirts. But in order to start with two shoes and T-shirts, you need to be able to have flexibility, your manufacturers need to be able to employ a lot of people with the certainty that if somehow for that particular firm, things turn bad, they can shed labor. Maybe some other firm will be doing well and they'll hire labor. And that's where the labor flexibility comes in. The other is clearly logistics and power. I mean, you need good quality power and you need it at competitive rates. And you need to have the sort of logistics that will enable you to get products from your factory out into the world market. You know, ten years ago, more than that, uh, I C I C I had done a very nice study comparing, uh, Chinese manufacturing in garments and Indian. And what they have found was that competitiveness of the Chinese with Indians was pretty comparable within the factory. But where the Chinese won was it took us two weeks to get the material to the factory and three weeks to get it out, whereas they were doing it in, uh, one and a half days. And in that sort of market, I mean, time delivery is crucial.
That's right.
You know, in the United States, you know, like almost two-thirds of all sales take place between, uh, Thanksgiving and Christmas. So there's no, you can't have a manufacturer says, vo to a to gya, but you know, kya hai, two weeks late, it doesn't matter. We don't have that, we don't have that culture yet.
That's true. Um, I was, I was actually, uh, and I think one way of looking at this is, I was, I was reading somewhere that, you know, the, the ratio between, uh, merchandise exports and services exports in India is two is to one, wherein China, I think it's twen- ten is to one and the world average is four is to one.
Yeah.
Right? And one way of looking at it is we have huge headroom, right? To correct that two is to one to something maybe, to take it towards the world average, right? Which is four is to one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, but we should do that by raising the manufactured exports.
Exactly.
We can also correct it by ruining the service export, right? We're going to do that.
Yeah, that's true, that's true. But, but do you, I mean, do you believe there, given, given how complex this really is? I mean, you're talking about labor, you're talking, you know, this whole Delhi-Calcutta freight corridor and the Delhi-Bombe freight corridor, from little that I've heard or seen, is stuck because of land acquisition and this, that, and the other, right? I mean, and you, you, you really raised that point, saying that all these different ministries have to come together to sit around the table and decide it, right? Just to make an allied point, I think one of the reasons why we don't have a large middle corporate sector is because entrepreneurs are scared of, you know, scaling up, right? Because they want to have, you know, those few people so that, you know, those other labor issues don't kick in, right? So purely as a, as somebody who brings a wealth of expertise, having worked in government, but now can speak perhaps more freely because you're a, you're a private citizen, do you believe that within the next ten years, we will be able to get our act together? Or we will just keep talking?
You know, let me say, uh, I would say that the, too much of the blame is placed on, uh, the bureaucracy. But you know, from my experience, and I'm writing about it because I'm writing a book of my, my own kind of experiences on this. Where the politicians have been totally clear what they want and where they're willing to take responsibility for the decisions, the bureaucracy is not obstructive. Or when it is, it's very easy to see who's being obstructive and you can just shift that person. So the real question is, are the politicians really clear that this has got to get done? I think in our system, by the way, we manage difficult situations when the objective is clear very well. I mean, U P is not usually regarded as a exemplar of a good management, but they do the kum mela beautifully. I mean, there are not too many places in the world where ten million people suddenly turn up and you have to take care of their water and sanitation and this and that because it's very clear that it has to be done. And I think we have to, you know, we have to put all these things on the same plane. You mentioned the Delhi, the freight corridor. My understanding is that now on the western freight corridor, all land acquisition is complete. So now it'd be very interesting and be good thing for the railway minister to say, well, now that that is done, here's a timeline and put a kind of a per chart out there. And sort of, they say that, for example, it's going to be complete by two thousand nineteen.
That's right.
Well, this is something eminently monitorable month by month, that are we on track? So I, it requires, it requires modern management skills. Uh, but I mean, it can be done, there's no question.
You've, you've been, uh, quoted in different articles and books about, about the famous, uh, export deregulation that happened in ninety-one when you were the commerce secretary, right? Uh, and Chidambaram was the minister.
Yeah.
Yeah? And how it, I think, happened in something like twelve hours, if.
Yep, ten hours.
Ten hours, sorry, ten hours, right? And I think, uh, the point that you've made over and over again is that, and which is what you're making now, is that if the politicians are convinced it can happen like that.
Yes.
Right? Do you believe the politicians are convinced today?
Well, I, I mean, I would judge only by performance. But I can tell you about nineteen ninety-one, and I've written about it in a fresh shift, uh, for Mr. Chidambaram that was published in a collection some years ago. I mean, uh, we were told that because of the devaluation of, which is about twenty percent, uh, the CCS was going to be abolished. Now, we were working on a trade policy that would have given some much nicer system of much more liberalized with so-called replenishment licenses and so on. Uh, first thing is that Mr. Chidambaram, after hearing this thing, said, yes, let's do it. So this was a major political decision, giving up discretionary control. Because while, I mean, he'll always be remembered for having done that, then most of my political science friends used to say that liberalization will never happen because no politician will give up discretionary control. Point number one. I suggested to him that, look, if you're going to give up the CCS, let's time it with the trade policy. Otherwise, you know, you'll be blamed for withdrawing the CCS and your trade policy will come two weeks later. So why don't we go to meet the finance minister, Dr. Manmohan Singh, and persuade them? And he said, right, let's do that. We went there. The officials were opposed to it, the finance ministry officials were opposed to it. Dr. Manmohan Singh overruled them. And he said, look, how long does it take to put this thing on paper? I said, two hours. We went back to the ministry, prepared a file, Chidambaram signed it. We went over to Dr. Manmohan Singh, he signed it, we went off to Mr. Narasimha Rao. And all that Mr. Narasimha Rao said was he asked Dr. Manmohan Singh, you know, uh, have you seen this, are you okay with it? And he said, yeah, I've signed it. So he said, give me the file, and he signed it. I mean, that is, uh, in ten hours, one of the ugliest administrative control ludicrous mechanisms got rid of. So, I mean, it's the same system, frankly. So I think if we bring the same, you know, there's an element of risk. That worked beautifully. I mean, but you have to, you have to be honest. And we did tell them, look, you can't be hundred percent sure what other problems will arise. Maybe it'll take longer. That risk has to be taken by the politicians. One thing is, I think, completely a mistake to expect to get consensus amongst the officials and then sign. I mean, that is only, that basically means the politician playing no role at all. The fact is that honest, there'll be honest difference of opinion. People are going to say, one on the one hand, one on the other. And that's where political executive decision-making should take place. Now, that's what happens in most countries when progress is made. When that doesn't happen, progress is not made, that's it.
So you're talking of political leadership, the willingness to take a decision and stand by it, right? I mean, and which doesn't happen all the time, yeah?
Well, in no country does it happen all the time everywhere. Uh, you know, so all countries go through periods where people say, this is a moment. And I think in ninety-one, the country was in such an impossible mess that, you know, it was clear to anybody that stabilizing it was important. Uh, what, what was good is that the decision was not just to stabilize, but to go much beyond that. You know, in the, in his first budget speech, Dr. Manmohan Singh concluded, mind you, the country was on his knees at that point, you know? I mean, reserves were, you know, one billion or something. But he concluded the speech by quoting Victor Hugo. You know, no power on earth can stop an idea whose time has come. And he said, I suggest to the House that the idea of India as an economic power is an idea whose time has come. So that's kind of big vision. So once you, once you say that's the vision, most people recognize, uh, that we've got to do something special. If you say, well, the main idea is to keep it together and not to collapse, then you automatically lower the target quite a bit.
But you know, given that we seem to be, uh, sort of trundling along happily at six and a half, seven, seven and a half percent, you know, we are now seen as a major power. Uh, you know, we have a rising middle class, this, that, and the other. In, in short, we don't have our backs against the wall like we had then.
Now, that's a very, first of all, by the way, to say we are fumbling along.
I said trundling.
Hmm?
I said trundling.
Okay.
I didn't say fumbling.
Okay.
I said trundling along, you know?
Trundling, well, even, you know, seven and a half is much more, I mean, I, I would say, look, I did this calculation for a lecture that I gave somewhere, that the average growth rate of India from two thousand three to about two thousand fourteen, fifteen, was seven point seven percent. You know, in some periods, eight point something, then some period a little low. In our, you know, unfortunately, one of the consequences of, uh, what I would call the breaking news syndrome, is that very few people look at the long-term trend. I mean, when the country is growing at eight and a half, they say, oh, when is it going to hit ten, twelve? When it goes down to six, they say, already growth has collapsed. But over a period of, you know, almost eleven years or so, uh, seven and, seven point seven percent is pretty good growth rate. And we're now, of course, growing faster than China, although we're way behind it. I mean, this is another problem, you know? I mean, people say we're overtaking China, we're not.
No, that's not.
The growth rate is overtaking China.
Yes, of course.
It'll take decades before we get there. So that's certainly doing well. Now, my view is, and again, you know, if you do an economic analysis, probably, we should be, in my view, we should be able to continue and slightly improve on the growth rate we've had over a longer term, which is, instead of seven and a half, seven point seven. I mean, if everything that we thought is feasible, is desirable, could be done, we could hit eight percent. That's what we said in the twelve-five-year plan.
That's right.
You know, we, we put out three scenarios. And we said, look, if you're really willing to do what is necessary, eight percent. You don't do anything, five and a half, and if you're somewhere in between, six and a half. That's what it is really. So I don't see why, uh, how decisive governments will be, I can't predict. But the country is capable of doing it. Uh, no objective reason why it can't.
We have another ten minutes, so I'm going to open it to the House. Uh, before asking the question, could you just introduce yourself and the organization that you're, gentleman over there? Could we have some mics around, please? Can we have some mics, please? Over here. Yeah?
I'm Mukun Prasad from NIMMS Mumbai. All that you have said about the, the domestic demand and export opportunities and the challenges which are facing the economy which we have, and you have been a great economist yourself, in your opinion, what are the top three things India needs to do?
That's a tough one, huh? You know, I would say that, first of all, whatever the issue, a sound macro balance is very crucial. Nobody ever disagrees with this, but it always gets forgotten every now and then. So I'm going to assume that the, and I think what the government has outlined as its fiscal target and so on is quite reasonable. So they should just stick to it. Right now, I would say that of the things that are floating around, probably in terms of contribution to efficiency, a successful and good GST is probably the lowest-hanging fruit that's in reach. I have no idea how these discussions are proceeding, because there are different views, but if they reach a satisfactory conclusion, I have no doubt whatsoever that it'll make a big contribution to GDP growth. So that's one. And it's a multi-part, it's a bipartisan issue. The bill was actually, I mean, the idea was first put forward by the previous government, this government has carried it forward. I just hope that they can reach some sort of a, but it's got to be a good GST. I mean, you know, a, a kind of a Motteton GST is not a good idea. So that's one. Second, I mean, I tend to think that, you know, the biggest gap that we have at the moment is infrastructure, okay? So some of what has been said about emphasizing infrastructure development, fixing the problems of the public-private partnership, which has really held up a lot of infrastructure projects, and linked to that is also actually the balance sheet weaknesses of some of the companies that are in this area. So this is another combination of things where somewhere between the finance ministry, the banks, and the Reserve Bank, some kind of a solution is certainly possible. And I do think that, you know, for the last twenty years, we've been going on and on about the power sector. Now, actually, the good news on the power sector is that it's very clear that we have the human capacity and the institutional capacity to set up power stations. Public sector fellows are doing it, private sector fellows are doing it, even in renewables, they're coming. Quite a lot of work has been done on transmission, and, you know, the national grid is now all going to be, is already connected, southern grid with the western grid, more needs to be done, but that's good. Where I think things are not working is on the distribution end. And, you know, the power industry cannot flourish if distribution isn't fixed, because that's where the money comes in, to pay for all the other stuff that people do. That is entirely in the hands of state governments. So I'm not saying that anybody can make all state governments do things sensibly, but you know, if three or four state governments demonstrate that in Indian conditions, power can be delivered at good quality and reasonable price, they will do incredibly well. Both domestic investment and foreign investment will go there. And that will give a signal. And of course, I've already said that, you know, the labor issue is something that should be addressed.
So no, I'm sorry, I've, you, yeah, the gentleman over there, please, yeah?
I'm Professor Shantanu Roy, from the Future Business School. So I have two simple questions for you.
Can you keep it to one, please? We'll just take one more question and close if we're running out of time.
Okay, okay, one. Do you think that Indian manufacturing is losing its competitiveness in the global arena because we are, we have not been able to become cost leaders?
Sorry, you're saying, do I think that it can be competitive?
Yes, it can be competitive if you become cost leaders.
Yeah. But I.
As, as for Michael Porter.
If you don't fix the problems that I've talked about, obviously, it's not going to be competitive. But if you look at basic capacity, if the Indian service industry is so competitive, then why on earth do we think the manufacturing fellows can't be competitive? Obviously, I mean, the software people, we knew this when it all started, because transport was not a problem for software guys, because through the sort of internet, they could move things as fast as anybody anywhere. So manufacturing has other constraints, we have to address those, but I don't see why they can't be competitive. By the way, I mean, take, take automobiles. When the entire ecosystem is set up, I mean, India is exporting components and all the rest of it for automobiles also. So I think this negative, I, I see no reason for assuming that manufacturing can't be made competitive.
Okay.
But we have to zero in on, I think the best thing really is that, you know, in different states, if state chief ministers were to realize that half the solution lies in their hands, then states that are serious about manufacturing will just do very well.
Last question here, please.
Yeah, Koshik Sarkar, representing Vinaak. In your speech, you said, there is a lot of activities that are going on from the VC funds. Why VC, you feel VC funds will be substituted by banks' operations for smaller companies? This is very important.
Yeah, can you just repeat the question?
Why, you said, lot of activities are there for the VC funds, I mean, startup capitals. Why you feel that the VC funds are not substituting banking operations?
No, sorry, they're doing what?
VC funds are substituting banking operations for smaller outfits.
No, you think VC funds are substituting or not substituting?
He said, in the speech you said.
No, 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 I'm not saying, what I'm saying is that if, for a smaller company, to grow into a middle company, before you can start having IPOs, you need to be able to have venture capital, private equity, people who look at the company in detail and say, this is a good company, put the money in. Now, earlier, we had innumerable little, little details which prevented such things from happening. You know, exit, for example, exit from a company that was not listed was quite difficult, because there was all this question of, at what price did you exit? Somebody would ask questions. Slowly, those problems are being taken care of. Even today, I think there are some problems that remain. But definitely for our system, this is something which, in my view, can very easily be done. The number of participants is small, and they can interact with the finance ministry and persuade them that this is the regime that we need. Now, the good news is that, you know, ten years ago, there weren't any VC funds. Today, there are. There was some news item that some of them are now also liquidating, which is very good, by the way, the complaint. The complaint earlier was that no VC fund wants to come into India, because once you invested, you can't get out. So in my view, it's very desirable that these fellows should be able to invest and get out. And those of them that got out and went into our country, which didn't do so well, will come back. So I'm, I'm moderately optimistic about what could happen in that area. I don't think that the notion that, you know, capital can be given by banks, banks are not meant to give equity capital anyway. And that's what we need to, we need to create.
Thank you so much for taking the audience's questions. Ladies and gentlemen, I'll have to bring the session to a close. Thank you very much for joining us at Infocomp. Thank you for a lovely talk and scintillating observations as a private citizen on the state of the economy. We, we rarely get this opportunity, you know, I think you're a private citizen after maybe nearly forty years, right? Thirty-six years, right? So thank you so much, all right, bye.
Thank you very much, sir, for a very interesting session. May I now request Mr. Dian Mukherjee to present a memento to Mr. Montek Singh Alawalia as a gesture of our gratitude. Thank you very much, sir, for being here with us. May I also request Mr. Sunil Kumar Sarkar, Executive Vice Chairman, Rice Group and Adamas University, to kindly come forward and present a memento to Mr. Montek Singh Alawalia. Thank you very much, sir, for your gracious presence. It was indeed a pleasure to listen to your insights. Thank you for sharing your thoughts with us. Thank you very much, sir.